Okay, so now seven thirty-five. I'll declare the special meeting of council for December sixth now in session. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Motion to approve agenda.
Any disclosures, council?
Yes, I have conflict, I'll be leaving.
Just one second, you do need to go.
Now we need a motion to win a closed session?
Nope, not yet.
No, you need to vote on.
Oh, sorry.
For all of us.
My second.
Yeah, I've got a second for the approval of the agenda. All those in favor of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion carried. Now we need a motion to win the closed session.
Uh, now I announce my disclosure. I have a conflict of interest, I'll be leaving me.
Yeah, you did, I already noticed that. It was mine, yep. Okay, so we need a motion to win the closed session, please?
May I move into closed session?
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. We are now going into closed session, so. Ask the public to leave camp for ten minutes. Okay, shall I have a motion to leave closed session and return to regular session, please?
A motion to go back into open session. I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. Now, I believe, Deputy Mayor John, you have a motion to read.
I do. Okay, this is a motion for December sixth, twenty twenty-two, special meeting of council. On November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, a special meeting of council is held in closed session to discuss a matter pursuant to section sixty-eight dash one J of the Local Governments Act, labor and employment matters including negotiation of collective agreements. Whereas council adopted bylaw number sixteen, two thousand and nineteen, a bylaw establishing a code of conduct for council, and whereas council, whereas Hamwell has also a conflict and complaint resolution policy, number twenty, twenty-two dash eight, which describes the procedures and the sanctions and the consequences for council and staff, and whereas policy twenty-two-two zero eight states a procedure for an informal complaint process, as individuals are encouraged to pursue an informal complaint procedure as a first means of remedying the conduct they believe violates the code of conduct. However, an individual is not required to complete this informal complaint procedure prior to pursuing the formal complaint. Any person who identifies or witnesses conduct by a member of council or staff and that person reasonably believes in good faith the individual is in the contravention of this bylaw or other legislative obligations may address, may address the prohibited conduct by: A, advising the individual that the conduct violates this code and human resource policies and encouraging the individual to stop; B, make requests to the clerk to assist in informal discussion of alleged complaint with the individual as an attempt to resolve the issue; C, the clerk may offer to facilitate the resolution of the complaint. If the clerk is unable to assist for any reason, he/she may offer the assistance of an official or professional mediator; D, in the event that the clerk is a subject or is implicated in the complaint, the person may request assistance of the mayor, and whereas members of staff and all members of council except Councilor Heisler brought forward verbal concerns, complaints regarding Councilor Pat Septon and his comments on social media and internal emails, and whereas the mayor and deputy mayor have discussed previous unprofessional matters for Councilor Septon, it has been determined that the clerk researched the alleged concerns, complaints. After researching the emails and social media posts from July first to November fifth, twenty twenty-two, a report was brought forward to Councilor Septon and council for the possible twenty-six violations of the code of conduct by law number sixteen dash two thousand and nineteen. In a letter to Councilor Septon, the clerk explained that the report would be brought forward to the council's closed session to review, and that Councilor Septon could address council before a decision was made, but he did not appear on the November twenty-eighth evening. Whereas Councilor Heisler, Holly Heisler, disagreed with the procedure followed, a letter will be read into the minutes stating that she voted no over each alleged violation, and that the letter will be attached as part of this motion. I therefore move that after careful deliberation, deliberation, in reviewing the violations presented in a majority vote, have determined that Councilor Septon has breached the code of conduct by law number sixteen dash two thousand and nineteen, with the following Confidential, section six A, did you close either directly or indirectly, would you make public or in any way divulge any such information, verbal or written, or any aspect of the closed session deliberations to anyone unless expressly authorized by the council or required by the law to do so? One violation. Reason, all internal communications regarding the information that will be brought forward at a meeting should be considered confidential until it is brought forward. Respectful workplace, section ten, all members of council have a duty to treat members of the public, one another, and staff with respect and without abuse, bullying, or intimidations, and ensure that their work environment is free from discrimination and harassment. Members of council must ensure compliance with the New Brunswick Human Rights Commission and worksafe N V. Three violations. Reason, email sent to the principal that was very unprofessional. Reason, a social media post criticizing the principal in public. Reason, unprofessional email about the clerk and how contractors are discussed in closed session. Conduct respecting staff slash council, section twelve C, no member of council shall maliciously or falsely harm the professional or ethical reputation or the prospects of the staff or other members of council. Five violations. Reason, according to the Governance Committee accusing, sorry, accusing the Governance Committee of arbitrarily changing motions, laws, and policies. Reason, accusing staff of falsifying documents when it was determined that there was a clerical error, a typo in a bylaw reviving a per diem payment for council when doing this work. Reason, after an apology by staff, Councilor Septon continued in saying that the changes to the bylaw were intentional. Reason, lack of respect for the mayor and the clerk's office for explaining the situation. Reason, accusing the mayor, the deputy mayor and clerk of using charity slash community budget for a private party on a vote at the local. Conduct respecting council for staff and council, section twelve F, members shall respect the role of the staff as a corporate body who are in charge of making recommendations that reflect their professional expertise and a corporate perspective, providing advice and analysis, implementing council decisions, and carrying out their duty responsibilities as required under the Local Governments Act, and the staff are expected to do so without due undue influence from any member of a group members. One violation. Reason, disrespectful to the clerk during the budget process, continually saying that he was, he, Councilor Septon, had nothing to do with the budget, yet he was, he had only missed one budget meeting in saying that it wasn't his. Conduct respecting council staff, section twelve G, members of council are not to use indecent, abusive, bullying, harassing, or insulting words or expressions towards another member, any staff of the, any staff of the community, or any member of the public. Two violations. Reason, an email sent to the clerk, copied to council, once again, and I quote, "Once again, you can do no wrong, and the hours spent trying to make me look like a bad guy. Openness and transparency means something different to me than you guys," insinuating staff and council. Reason, a response from Councilor Septon to the mayor in a threatening, "Be aware, any action taken against me will be made public. If any action is taken, please ensure you do it correctly this time, as it will be brought higher." Interpersonal behavior, section thirteen A, treat every person with dignity, understanding, and respect. Members of council shall abide by the provisions of the Human Rights Act, and in doing so shall treat every person, including other members of council committees, boards, municipal staff, individuals, providing services on a contract basis, and the public with dignity, understanding, and respect. One violation. Reason, the email sent to the clerk, the email sent to the clerk and council about clerk doing no wrong and trying to make Councilor Septon look like a bad guy, and then insulting council. Use of social media, sixteen A, once posted on social media, any material or comments is accessible to anyone with an internet connection. Furthermore, the content can never be effectively removed. As public figures and representatives of the rural community of Hamwell, members should act with discretion and be judicious in what materials they post on social media. As with any other communication, members are accountable for their content and confidentiality. Care should be, care should be exercised in debates and comments on contentious matters, as feelings and emotions can become inflamed very quickly. One violation. Reason, unprofessional email sent to the principal stating that he was working against the Minister of Transportation's guidelines to achieve safety. Use of social media, media, section sixteen C, no men, no member shall use social media to publish anything that is dishonest, untrue, unsubstantiated, offensive, disrespectful, constitutes harassment, is defamatory, or misleading in any way. Four violations. Reason, stating the R C M P did not want a crosswalk built when there has been no communication with the R C M P. Reason, stating that the principal of the Hamwell Park Academy was not in favor of a path, sidewalk, or trail. The principal never said he was against sidewalks. Reason, a disrespectful email sent to the principal of the Hamwell Park Academy. Reason, a social media post requesting that the principal make a public statement, the principal emailed the mayor saying that Councilor Septon is now blocked from all social media. Use of social media, sixteen D, where members provide a personal view or opinion on social media, members should take steps to be sure that each personal views or opinions are not construed to be those of the rural community of Hamwell as a whole, and/or such that personal view or opinion does not accurately reflect the decisions of council of bringing the, or bringing the decision-making process of council into dispute. One violation. Reason, a decision of council was made not to place a trail between Hamwell Place and the school, no further discussion should have been discussed on social media. Okay, it has been determined that the following consequences shall be imposed to Councilor Septon, will be. The public reprimand through a motion of censure will occur. A letter of reprimand will be provided by the mayor stating that Councilor Septon's behavior will be reviewed on an ongoing basis for the next year, and that any violations will be dealt with as soon as they occurs at the next council meeting after the possible violation to discuss further sanctions. Councilor Septon's remuneration will be suspended for the period of December seventh to May third, December seventh, twenty twenty-two to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Any further violations may result in the suspension being extended. Councilor Septon will be required to take training at the expense of the municipality, and that the courses will be termed in the near future. All social media posts on Pat Septon, Councilor at Large, and emails from psepton@hamwellmv. ca will have to have prior approval by the mayor before being released. The following, the following consequences must be actioned in the next thirty days. An apology must be given to the mayor and deputy mayor in person and in writing, and an apology must be given to the assistant clerk and clerk in person and in writing. An apology must be given to the principal Pierre Plorn, a public, oh, sorry, and a public apology must be given to the principal Pierre Plorn in person as well as on social media. And an apology must be given to council in person and in writing.
I'll second it.
So, motion on the board, red, and seconded.
May I speak now, or?
Just to hang on a second, I'm just gonna go to get to that. So, any comments?
Please. This is gonna be written into the record, I'll send you the document, hold on. You'll have to excuse me, I'm obviously a little worked up. On January twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, at the height of the pandemic, I had a processor for countermeasure door and served me a legal document that I'm to cease and desist making negative comments about the rural community, the then mayor, not the current, and/or its operations from the community, and those packages were at my door. You both have them in your package, what that particular information is, and it has been shared with the media. It makes one question the decision-making paradigm of a community. I ran for council to address this obvious overreach and ensure it didn't happen to anyone else. I'm exceptionally sensitive to the government resources being used to intimidate its citizens. I ran to address the lack of transparency in our community and address the safety concerns I had with getting kids safely to the pending new school so that we could figure out how to get kids where they're. Just over a month after being sworn in, I was called into the mayor's office on July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, and threatened with my first code of conduct. I have only been invited to the mayor's office just out of coincidence for code of conduct conversations. What did I do? I posted a video on YouTube asking our community what would be a good solution to getting our kids safely to the school. The YouTube link is in there, it'll be in your packages. Where I engaged the public, my constituents via YouTube, to ask what they think, is it an issue? Do they, the people, what do they want? Can we make any safe methods to get our kids to the school? And I had a lot of positive community feedback. The mayor adamantly and fervently expressed that I'm not to engage in the public, and I shouldn't be able to talk, that I shouldn't be talking about it, and I'm not allowed to talk to the public about it without his and council's permission. This was more, there was more to that conversation, I'm gonna keep it personal for now. When I got home from that meeting, I was sick, I literally threw up on the lawn, and I did inform the deputy mayor of such. We clearly, he clearly and emphatically stated that if I were to engage the public, I'd be subject to a code of conduct violation. Thinking the mayor is new, and he just needs some time to get his sea legs under him, I did advise him I'd give him six months while we're working towards, and then I'd be working to correcting it. On February eleventh, after five P M on a Friday, I received an email from the mayor where I was found guilty of a code of conduct and removed from all committee assignments, noting I wasn't even aware there was a tribunal, an accusation, and issue. In fact, I had to email the mayor to say, okay, I have a code of conduct, what for? A couple of emails later, it was discussed. This completely secret investigation was done solely at the mayor, the deputy mayor, and the clerk's office for sharing literally provable facts with the Communications Committee about the lack of a school crosswalk and how some members and staff of council don't see it as an issue. To this day, I have yet to see a single article on this document, except I was found guilty and stripped of all committee assignments for sharing the facts to the public. Facts I would swear in a Bible are true today. A reason I can't serve on a committee today is because I fear they'll just rip me off and further sculling my reputation. This punitive document that was presented to this council was brought on by members of council and staff, apparently every member and council of staff except for Councilor Heisler, the clerk stated. Who? Who are the members? And if I were a reporter or a citizen, I would want to see what issues line up with what code of conduct, because some documents in this thing matter, and you should be able to see it line up. There are all kinds of incidents along the way that lead up today, but this sham of a document that is presented as facts to council is further bullying and intimidation and the weaponization of the code of conduct. It is solely punitive. Code of conduct in this office, at least to me, is to make people toe a party line or stop asking questions. It's a blatant attempt to have me stop sharing what we were doing to the public, and moreover, to distract from the questions I have in my oversight role. Let's not for, let's note that not a single conversation or question or by a council or staff during this whole entire investigation was even directed at me. I did recuse myself when I was in closed session, so I didn't, I can come out here and speak free, if I was in closed session, I couldn't. Not a single question by the investigator was put to me. The impartial investigator was able to do impartial investigation without communicating with me whatsoever. I'll be addressing each of these items in the secondary documents you already have in your hands and hand it out. I'm rattled, I'm sleep deprived, so please excuse my spelling or grammar incidents in the documents I shared. However, I do want to bring your attention to documents that the deputy mayor and the investigator have brought up. Policy two thousand and twenty-two dash zero eight, conflict and compliance resolution procedure policy. There's a lot of items in here that pertain to me, but I'm gonna pick on one. Two B I, it's in your package. All formal complaints shall be made in writing to the clerk and shall be dated and signed. Moving on to another document mentioned in my code of conduct. Bylaw number sixteen, two thousand and nine, a bylaw establishing a code of conduct for council. Five A, members of council will conduct their duties with integrity, accountability, and transparency. Five C, members of council understand that the public has a right to transparency in the decision-making process. Five E, members of council will avoid improper use and influence of their office. It was clear that this was brought on by council and staff, and I can ask the rhetorical question, why we didn't follow our own rules, but I know the answer. This isn't about being fair, it's a process being punitive for shared to the public, a motion, a motion that was gonna come, go into council, next council session. Specifically, the pending motion was to stop the recordings of council. I'd like to point out, in your code of conduct, there is another falsity saying that this was in closed session, that is not so. Further, for people who wish to wear tipit, it's in your packet. Number one, admin session dated November four, two thousand and twenty-two, you can clearly see this written out, and subject two, Patrick Septon, sorry, Pat Septon, Councilor at Large, Facebook post dated November five. But to take a quote out of this thread, the motion will, in fact, be written to stop publishing them effective immediately, so the next meeting will not be published if the motion passes. I feel like that has public interest, and people should have to know. I was threatened with the code of conduct by the mayor for sharing that this motion was coming to my constituents. I refused and warned the mayor and council that I will not take this line down this time, and I will defend myself. Part of my code of conduct here today, as you have heard through the deputy, is that I threaten council because I told them I would defend myself for their threat of a code of conduct against me, hence why we are here today, and you can follow the TikTok thereafter. I'd like to point out, as I was trained, we have no legal rights or expectations to secrecy, that our debates are to be public consumption, and we are not afforded the rights of a confidential cabinet, contrary to words spoken here today. Specifics to the complaint, and I recommend everything be our tipit, as I've only dealt with this council since November two thousand and twenty-one via email, and I asked all for full email threads, so you can understand what my year was like. Solar system, Councilor X and resident. It was August sixteenth for the atippa purposes, it wasn't the date that's in that sham of a document. The constituent, Mr. Robichaud, who is in this room today, if anybody cares to talk to him, was talking to me. I didn't disclose anything to him, it was he who later filed, who I later found out, he filed a code of conduct in regards to a solar installation and a counselor at Hamwell. I only found out with the investigation.
Excuse me. Mr. Robichaud, please refrain from speaking out during the council meeting.
I wasn't speaking.
You were pointing and mouthing.
Oh, yes, but that's not.
Anyway, please refrain.
Oh, yeah.
Restrain yourself. Thank you. Carry on.
Fair point, of course. It was he who later found out, filed a code of conduct regarding solar installation and a counselor at Hamwell. I only found out with the investigation afterwards via the email, I disclosed nothing to the person who created the code of conduct. Further, we budgeted forty thousand dollars for this project. To date, I believe we spent a hundred and twenty thousand, I believe we got a grant for maybe forty. The math doesn't add up, and I believe we spent more. Who authorized the extra expenses? It wasn't council. Did we pay extra for electrical or engineering? I do not know. On August sixteenth, I asked for the information via email, and to this day, I still haven't received a single quote to review, let alone the contract we accepted. I have no idea what the invoice is, I have no idea what we bought. My job is oversight as part of a role of council. I asked, there is no time to provide me with that, but there's all kinds of time for this sham process. There is something wrong, and it isn't me. I suspect my asking about this on behalf of a constituent, I might add, is part of the reason it was added to this sham document to help me back off. I did submit this earlier to the Umbud, and I'm waiting for them to get caught up, she assured me it will be looked into. By policies and bylaws, it was a deliberate act to change a motion after the fact as recorded in emails. It wasn't false, it wasn't fake, it happened. Our tipit, read it for yourself, I report to the people and council, not the clerk. Hamwell Park Academy. You can listen to the audio that I'm gonna be transcribing some here, it's a meeting in July. Some of us were trying to get a safe place for our kids to cross the six forty. I was told, it was told to us for months that the principal of the Hamwell Academy, DTI, R C M P, didn't want a trailer sidewalk that was required to cross, told to us by the clerk, the mayor, and the deputy mayor. Make no mistake, there was no confusion in council, why we who wanted the trail wanted it. It was for the potential to have a crosswalk. Speed is the only other thing we needed to be considered and looked at, but if the Irving can have one, so could we. And so could our children. That the principal, as we were told, actively worked against this, then find out the first day of school, a pair texted me a photo of bike racks with bikes. In July two thousand and twenty-two, in many months prior, the clerk, the mayor, and the deputy mayor reiterated over and over again the principal didn't want the sidewalk, as was necessary to get the crosswalk. You ask every member of this council if I'm wrong, but then to find out there was bike racks blew my mind. How did the principal magically expect the bikes to get there? He injected, of course I challenged his premise, he injected himself into our public debate. Now, because we have public recording sessions, listen to the mayor's transcript of that event, of council session, and why he voted against it. For road improvements, be they crosswalks, sidewalks, traffic lights, and any other infrastructure anywhere in Hamwell regarding the roads, which in fact we do not own and do not have any control over, is highly unjust. I disagree with the statement, but I'll go on. Also, DTI has corresponded with us that they will not support a trail along the six forty, and the principal of the academy has said he is not in favor, he stated the trail in existence from Hamwell Place to the academy is more than adequate and safer for the students to use, and with this in mind, I cannot support the motion, and I vote in the nay, therefore the motion is defeated. Notice he started with why we wanted it and tied it to the principal. He goes further. Thank you, council, at this time, I too want to remind Councilor, bylaw zero one, two thousand and fourteen, a bylaw respecting procedures of council administration, section five I, any decision a council adopted in the public meeting is the official position of the entire council, his position is part of that. In this sham, code of conduct, the investigator comes at me for this, for making this up, and I remind people of what was said in the recorded transcript by the deputy mayor. Standards for the sidewalk and crosswalks, and just because we don't necessarily agree with the answer doesn't mean the standards are not there, and we were told repeatedly, DTI, the Department of Education, the principal, and I believe the R C M P do not see value in this trail. We know why we were here. Further, in a tipa, further, in a tipa, that I just got back in November twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-two, from the district, a letter was sent to the mayor and the clerk dated September two thousand and twenty-two, and via only in our tipa, I didn't get this from my government. And on your oversight, I received a letter that was written to the clerk and mayor where he clearly states it was for council, and I had to go through a third party to get that letter. The principal absolutely refutes the assertions provided by the mayor and deputy mayor previously mentioned. The mayor and the clerk or the investigator have charged me with a code of conduct for posts that were not only righteous, but brought truth to the situation. The truth just not shared with council, as it was a deliberate to hide the facts that clearly addressed to council and the mayor. So when somebody from this body comes at me with punitive code of conduct charges about letting the public know about stopping the recordings, you're goddamn right I'm passionate about it. Without it, it would be my word versus the hive. Facts matter, and the public has a right to know them. To the media and the public. I have, along with Councilor Heisler, done everything we could to arrange the safety dealing with contradiction after contradiction. I would recommend you each reach out to DTI and get from them why they don't want the safety for our community and the R C M P. I am sure the clerk has records of who informed her and the mayor. My vote in this effort is subject, on this subject is over. The motion can only be changed by someone who voted in the negative. This is only brought up now because of this sham process, or I wouldn't have relitigated it. Closed session contracts, this is also at the Umbud, and she promises to me, ensures me she will look into it. However, I'm getting charged with a code of conduct in the meantime. This closed session was so secret, it was secret even to me until seven P M that night when we were in closed session. This was about a garage contract and recycling that was open to the public just one year ago, and it, again, it's at the Umbud's office. I wasn't given time to prepare, research, or even know what I was gonna vote on. I wanted to engage the public, and I wasn't able to. I've been charged with a code of conduct for sharing the public portion of the public debate on social media. Let that sink in. It offends every sensibility I own. I still indeed question this, and I cannot work for a government whose desires to hide things from not only the public, but at least some of the council until the last minute. Budget process, I won't speak too much on this because I don't know what I'm allowed to release or talk about, but I strongly suggest the community to do in our tipa. Revised budget, subject, revised budget two thousand and twenty-three dated October twenty-three to October twenty-seven, and ensure it's the entire thread, do not accept a perished thread. It resulted in an emergency meeting of November one. I stand behind. I stand behind all my statements in this punitive code of conduct. Council? Think of all the drama I caused. Think of it. All the drama I caused you. All the hours I caused you in work dealing with issues. Then think of who you're talking to, because it certainly isn't me. I make a point of not talking to any of you fellows, because I was trained that we don't, shouldn't be talking about stuff before we get to council. I will not, I have not, I don't even do it with councillor Heisler. If you look at the cross of water I'm asking, it's to engage the public in facts, not to hide things. But let all issues land on their own merit. Not once. Not even on issues I have huge concerns with, did I ever relitigate a vote I failed on. Until today, I've never spoken negatively about council. You would never have heard a negative story about me, about you, from me, not one of you, from anybody. But I hear a lot of stories about me from people, from people's lips here. If you find me guilty on anything in this document, which apparently it's already happened, it says more about you than me. With the number of hours you spent, the many hours pouring over this document, I feel that you're trying to pick pepper out of a pile of poop. This should have been thrown away based on the sheer number of false and ineffective information in it. I hear repeatedly by members of this body that it's hard to get the public involved. I argue it isn't if you let them be involved. To the community, you will invariably hear a lot of negative things about me in defense of this body, to this action I've been forced into. Just know, since November 2021, I have almost always exclusively emailed. I saw the writing, I knew what was going to happen. Any facts shared should be easily provable. Ensure you are a tipper for full email threads. They may even be true. I need a tipper just to see if they are true, the stuff that's going to hear about me. So I ask you, don't just accept facts shared, but do our tipper them, and don't accept parsed emails. Ask for full threads, you'll see what my year was like. I can't service councillor if I can't engage the public on what I know to be true. I can't be threatened not one more time for sharing facts to the public. The office has weaponized the use of code of conduct to keep me quiet and to inflame my reputation with what I'm really trying to do to other, as to other councillors, and to make me look bad and feel like I'm the evil guy. I simply ask that the rules be applied fair and evenly. Indeed, I have issues with how things are running. This is the public's money, and duly, and as a duly elected official, I swore on a Bible to uphold an oath, and I'm still doing so here today, but I can't do it alone anymore. I ask the province to step in. Read these documents provided by our leadership, do a public inquiry, even if one is asked by this body, which I don't hear that's happening, and I want the province to do their own. If I am truly wrong, they should share that with the public. My constituents deserve to know if I'm worthy to serve. My faith in this process is shaken. There are a lot of new communities out there, and we cannot be an example for them. We're supposed to debate in public, tell truth, share facts as we know them, vote, move on, and have a beer. Personal tribal grievances have no place in good governments, but all the room in the world at the Hanwell Council. When I showed this sham of a document to a trusted advisor, he stated, "Pat, this isn't a combination of you, it's your resume going forward." It sure doesn't feel it. I admit to having a romantic view of how a government should behave, and how it should be driven by the will of the people, open and transparent. But I can't carry this alone anymore. Hanwellians, you either care and continue to care, or don't, and I'll resign. I, I am owed an apology, and I don't care what your council tribal politics are. Truth is truth, facts are facts, and public is rights. Your worship. It just may seem I'm coming at you in my defense here today, but I truly believe you are a good person. So don't take this as a personal affront. And I can actually see a path where I'll probably end up voting for you again. But I ask you to apply critical thinking of what you're hearing, and know I'm not your enemy. Remember why you ran, and how it felt, and know how it feels for me now. Now ask how we got here. It's time we get some sunlight on our actions, mine included. I stand by everything I've done, I yield back.
Thank you, councillor Septon. I believe moving on, we would have councillor Heisler box read the letter into the minutes.
Okay.
Fair enough.
No, this is all part of the. Okay, so in the past, when council has been presented with a code of conduct complaint against a councillor, a formal written complaint was received, dated, and signed by the complainer. In this code of conduct complaint, this was not done. A formal complaint was not signed by anyone, and was not included in our package. So this would mean that it's an informal complaint. But then, according to the clerk's letter, and I quote, "An informal discussion of the alleged complaint with the individual should have taken place." My understanding is that there weren't any discussions with councillor Septon after the alleged violations that are noted in the document. Instead, there was a file started on councillor Septon dating back to July. Also, in the clerk's letter, it stated, and I quote, "After investigating, it has been determined that there are 26 violations to the code of conduct." So an investigation had already taken place without any formal complaint being signed. These alleged violations were given to council in November with the instructions that we had to examine the documents to determine if a breach had occurred, and if sanctions were warranted, or if a professional mediator should review the documents. Again, there wasn't a formal complaint filed, so in my opinion, it should not have moved forward. The fact that there's a file on councillor Septon, and only councillor Septon, is extremely disconcerting and inappropriate. In councillor Septon's rebuttal previously, it is noted that according to the clerk, every member of council except me made a complaint against councillor Septon. However, not one councillor filed a formal complaint. It does beg the question, which councillor made what complaint? I believe councillor Septon has a right to know who is making a complaint against him and accusing him of violating the code of conduct. The fact that I was the only councillor not involved in these allegations makes me question the discussions that the rest of council were having, and if this is happening on a regular basis. This creates an atmosphere of mistrust. In my opinion, this investigation without a formal complaint is not acceptable. The process set forth in our conflict complaint resolution policy has not been followed properly, and therefore, in my opinion, this investigation is not warranted or valid. Quite simply, all members of council that made a complaint against councillor Septon should be considered biased, and should not be part of this application process. If any investigation should take place, it should be carried out by an impartial, third-party mediator. That's it.
Thank you, councillor Heisler. Now, moving on, clerk, where she was in the, a point, you know, of concern in a lot of the emails back and forth to, from councillor Septon. She would like to read a little bit of the best policy, councillor.
Mayor and council, I am writing this letter in response to the code of conduct on councillor Septon, and would like to have this read into the mail, a special meeting of council on December 6, 2022. Councillor Septon. Back at the beginning of the year, a lawyer was hired, and after reviewing many, many emails and documents, found that I had grounds to legally charge you with harassment in the workplace. Cox and Palmer found that it was on the low end of the scale, but was still legally valid. I agreed that I just wanted you to learn from your mistakes and not be a keyboard warrior, and decided to not move forward with a lawsuit. On February 28, 2022, you met with mayor and deputy mayor, and agreed that you acknowledged the situation and was looking forward to rebuilding a relationship with the clerk's office. During this time, you have accused me of a committee meeting, and have since mentioned it a few times, that I do not care about the safety of the children in Hanwell. And I find this so hurtful and rude. It is my job to provide council with information, pros and cons, so that they can make the best decision regardless of the topic. Since then, you have accused my staff, which is part of the clerk's office, of falsifying records, which is a very serious accusation, considering the number of important records and large amount of funds that we handle. The so-called document that we have been accused of falsifying does not even benefit us, as it was discussing a per diem for council's pay if they missed work. The only words that were falsified was that we didn't change the words "up to $300," as council agreed it should be amended to "shall be $300." This is called a typo, which we quickly apologized for the error, and changed it, and put it on the website correctly. Yet even last week, you continued to accuse us of this. Then council made a motion to donate funds of $500 to the Yoho Lake Association for their summer festival. And you turned around in an email to council and said that the deputy mayor and I used those funds for, sorry, for a private party on a boat in Yoho. That is an absolute lie, and I do expect an apology. I live out that way, and I can watch the fireworks on the side of the road, swimming in the lake, or on a boat. That is my right, and you have no right in accusing me or us of more or less stealing municipal money. During the March administration session, I explained to council that during a meeting on January 28 with EECD, DTI, and SMB, that we were told that sidewalks, walking, and biking trails were the responsibility of Hanwell. And I asked DTI to provide it in writing that we were allowed to do infrastructure on DTI property, as the Hanwell Road, Route 640, is a provincial highway. And as a rural community, we do not own any roads in Hanwell, and especially not a provincial highway. For the record, we are still waiting for this in writing. DTI responded on February 11, asking for additional information to my questions. The operation branch of DTI answered one of my questions regarding the possibility of a crosswalk being installed once sidewalks were built. Quote, "Based on the prevailing speeds in the area of the Hanwell Road, this location," which we're talking across the road from here, "would not be a candidate for an upgrade crosswalk. Based on the current roadway environment, the posted speed limit will remain at 80 kilometers an hour outside of school hours," end of quote. This was also stated in a letter from Minister Jill Green, that a crosswalk is not feasible due to the speed limit on the Hanwell Road. Since then, council has directed me to contact the minister again, asking to reduce, have the speed limit reduced, which we have, and that, hopefully, we'll hear from that. This was presented to council at the February council meeting, and the conversation changed from the sidewalks to having the clerk look into the possibility of a trail along Route 640 in order for students to have a safe means of evacuation from the school. And now with the principal, and explained suggestion by council to have a trail in front of the school connecting the two properties. The principal did not feel this was needed, as he stated, "Hanwell Place would not be large enough to accommodate all students. Therefore, it is not known that they would even use Hanwell Place as an evacuation location." If an evacuation had to be done, and they could use Hanwell Place, students could be directed through the existing trails behind Hanwell Place that connect to the school. I did not discuss sidewalks or crosswalks with the principal, and take great offense in you stating in emails and on social media that I have lied to council. During your atipper request, you received a letter that was addressed to the mayor in September that I didn't have during the research process for this code of conduct, or I would have included it. As it does not say what you are implying, it does not prove that I have lied, as the principal's opening statement is, and I also have it right here if you need to see it.
We all have.
Okay. Quote, "In late March or April, in an informal conversation with Ms. Terry Parker, I was asked about the use of a sidewalk," which was actually the path in the ditch, "along Route 640 connecting the Hanwell Community Center to the school so parents can use as a drop-off for their children to come to school. I responded by explaining there was no need for a sidewalk, as the school had a built-in design that had adequate and separate from the buses, drop-off land and zone for parents. I was not privy, nor had anyone approached me about the building and use of sidewalks to having crossing lights and other safety measures," end of quote. Excuse me. This is proof that I did not lie. I never discussed sidewalks with the principal, and never said that he was against them. Then you had the audacity to ask on November 30, "What other secrets do I keep from council?" I share everything with council. My office is an open book, but if you are the one that chooses not to listen, that is on you. I especially do not like your accusations, and you stated on November 30, "I don't believe you understand how much trouble we can potentially be in. I believe that if a kid gets hurt, errors and omissions will not cover some people on council. Let's pray we never need to find out." I am not an expert in insurance, and that is why I have to listen to the professionals that do. But I find this comment very ironic, and I will use your social media, quote, "It boils my onions," end of quote. That you have so much negativity about the school on the first and second day of the opening, yet you approve a motion to have a multipurpose surface and scaping ring placed on the side of Hanwell. And to use your other quote, "How in bloody hell do you expect kids to get here?" Or use our bike racks. Instead of singing the praises of the original council, MLA Dominic Cardy, and the many residents who worked together on committee to lobby the government to build the school in Hanwell instead of Frederiton, you use social media for your platform to ridicule the principal on those first two days. In my own personal opinion, shame on you, councillor Septon. You have challenged my position as clerk, stating that this code of conduct process should not have been a closed session, but be advised that I felt this was in the best interest for you to discuss it in closed session, and then all decisions and motions would be in open sessions. I contacted local government today, December 5, yesterday, and have received confirmation that I have followed the process correctly. Councillor Septon, this year has been so busy for us with endless requirements for the municipal reform, and having you as a councillor, when you are constantly undermining the code of conduct, procedural bylaws, harassment in the workplace, but especially your negativity on social media, communication with the clerk's office and council, it is mentally draining. Furthermore, I mustly address the amount of money that you have cost our taxpayers due to the endless meetings that were required with the mayor and deputy mayor, as well as overtime required for me to complete my required duties that were extended into evenings and weekends, as we are constantly putting out fires that you have created. Your actions have taken me away from my private time, as well as my family time. You would be a perfect councillor, as I am all for public engagement and sharing information, but show some respect to our contractors, and at least give me a few hours to contact our contractors before informing the public. It is not trying to hide information, it's called respect for others. You did an amazing job with Spook Fest, you are knowledgeable in so many areas, and you are always willing to help when required. Yet you get behind a keyboard, and all the good you do goes out the window once you hit that send button. Councillor Septon, I have not charged you with anything. I brought forward a report of violations, and it was council that had to deem them as violations or not, not me. You have stated in emails to council and on social media that you have no faith in the clerk's office, and you are going to resign if I'm guilty. So if that should be the outcome, and you stand by your word, I wish you all the best.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from council? Okay, we're ready to have the vote on the motion read by the deputy mayor. All those in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded?
Nay.
So we have one day, and we have three in favor, therefore the motion is carried, and the sanctions will be held up against councillor Septon for being in violation of the code of conduct. Thank you, council, for attending this rather late meeting, and thank you for the publics for taking the interest at our meeting. And any one of you, and your friends are welcome to attending our council meetings. And any one of your, and your friends are welcome to attending our council meetings. By all means, feel free, and I do appreciate you much tonight.
Motion to adjourn.
My second.